Good evening. Welcome to the July 11th, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Spohays?
Here.
Mr. Cange?
Present.
Mr. Spinelli?
Here.
Ms. Barker?
Here.
Mr. Strike?
Here.
Ms. Bailey has been excused. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve June 6th and June 13th. Can we have a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Strike and Mr. Spring. Any issues with the minutes? Any objection? Hearing none. Those minutes are adopted. Disclosures. Mr. Spring?
Yes, I wasn't at the meeting that involved the resolutions D-1C and D-1D. So I won't be voting on those.
Thank you. Mr. Strike?
Yes, I have one in the matter of D-1A. That's case 2016-0037. I was absent from that meeting and will not be voting.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
No disclosure.
Tony?
I have on my cheat sheet here that I was absent for 2015-0093, but I don't see that on the consent agenda, so...
It is. It's, uh, yeah.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. I'll be abstaining from the consent agenda.
Great. Thank you. Andre?
Nothing.
Mitzi?
Thank you. I will also be abstaining from the consent agendas. I was absent for the case 2015-0093.
Thank you. And Mr. Spohays?
None. Thank you.
And I have none. Brings us to the consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Strike, Mr. Spohays. Aside from those who will not be voting due to absence, any issues? Anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Any objection to the consent agenda? Hearing none. That agenda is approved. Brings us to the regular agenda. Case number 2016-0023, Sears Roebuck &amp; Company, remand from Superior Court. Can we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sears Roebuck &amp; Company seeks approval of an amendment to an existing large retail establishment site plan reviewed under the old code. The Sears mall is a large retail establishment which is deemed to have an approved site plan as it existed prior to May 8th, 2001, the date of adoption of large retail establishment standards. Thus, changes to the Sears mall are reviewed under AMC 2155-130, which states that "The commission shall apply the standards set out in 2153-20 in a manner proportionate to the extent of the expansion, reconstruction, renovation, or remodeling proposed. The cost of compliance with those standards shall not exceed 10% of the cost of the reconstruction." The petitioner is renovating a portion of the Sears store, the Nordstrom Rack, and the future tenant space is located at the north portion of the existing Sears store. The proposed renovation of the building facade has not increased the floor area of the mall as the renovation takes place within the existing space, and the project includes the addition of a 683-square-foot loading dock and screened trash receptacle along the north side of the existing Sears store. Cost of compliance: The commission has authority to require improvements that do not exceed 10% of their overall cost of the renovation. The petitioner has submitted estimated costs for the improvement as follows. The total cost of the renovation is $334,600. The applicant indicated this amount is for the loading dock addition and not interior renovations. 10% of this amount is $33,460. As noted in the attached department memo from 2009, the goal of the department is to use this 10% dollar figure to work on bringing the expansion of the new structure and the existing structure towards compliance with architectural standards while also trying to bring improvements to the site. Generally, the sites and anchorage are lacking in areas of pedestrian vehicle safety, landscaping, pedestrian access, and building architecture. The non-motorized transportation coordinator is requesting a pedestrian connection to Northern Lights Boulevard at the West Riley driveway, but considering that there is a pedestrian connection at the East Riley Drive and the fact that there is no mid-block crossing between Northern Lights and Seward Highway all the way down to Denali Street, staff has recommended improvements in the landscaping along Northern Lights Boulevard, along the building frontage, and providing walkway striping in the drive aisle to the east entry doors. Conformance to 2155-130 and 2150-320 is the overhanging awning on the east side facade. It meets the requirements of AMC 2150-320 P dot 1. The applicant must replace it with a conforming alternative if they remove it. The applicant can stay in conformity if they remove less than awning along the east elevation Nordstrom Rack storefront. New landscaping replaces existing landscaping that is being removed. New entries and new loading dock meet the standards, and the new window on the north side is an improvement. Given the intense commercial quality of the surrounding property, the requirement to vary roof lines and height should not have a great or negative impact on surrounding properties. ADOT and PF Department of Transportation has expressed concern over existing trees blocking the driver's ability to see any traffic as they exit onto Northern Lights Boulevard. Landscaping that is within the ADOT site, triangle must be removed. The department is asking that any trees that are removed to be replaced on a one-to-one basis. Other visual noise buffers, given the surrounding use, major roads, there should be little noise generated on the site that could impact nearby land uses. The new loading area is partially buffered by a screening wall, and as noted earlier, staff recommends adding landscaping along Northern Lights Boulevard which would further screen the loading area. The petitioner states that there are no plans for any outdoor storage as part of this project, and snow will be plowed and removed from the site. The screened trash receptacle enclosure proposed on the north side of the building will feature architectural elements of the building to tie it together, as stated, and staff that recommends, the department recommends once again, that landscaping along Northern Lights will help screen this loading dock area. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on June 13th, 2016, in which public testimony was heard. The hearing was postponed to July 11th as there was a question on the court ruling and the holding. The commission is directed tonight to review the petitioner's amended site plan application in its entirety for compliance with the code, old code title 21. One more thing here. To finalize, the division recommends approval of the amended site plan review for the Sears store, tenant improvements for Nordstrom Rack located on the north side of the Sears mall subject to conditions 1 through 8 found on page 12 of the staff packet. The petitioner and petitioner's representative is here tonight to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Mr. Spring?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair. I wasn't at the public hearing on June 13th, 2016. I did listen to the tapes of the public hearing, so I believe I can participate in this.
Thank you for listening. Any questions, John? At this point? Anybody else have questions of staff? Okay. Just, I'm going to read the rules for public hearing, and for those of you that were here the last time, the process is, we started the public hearing last time. I'm going to invite the petitioner forward in a moment to give a slight intro in the context of the full review of the, under the big box standards, and then those that did not testify previously will be invited to come forward and testify at that point. So, procedure by which the public may speak to the commission is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, originally 10, you have six and a half minutes remaining. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, five minutes, and individuals, three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at time of filing. So with that, could we have the petitioner come forward, please? And like I said, six and a half minutes, but you can let us know when you state your name for the record, how much time you'd like reserved for the rebuttal.
Questioners, my name is Joseph Fries. I'm with Davis Wright Termaine, here on behalf of Saritich, the petitioner.
Can you move your mic up just a little bit, sir? Thank you.
James Bree is with Saritich here, and Brian Walsh is here also to answer any questions. Just to recap briefly, we were here earlier, gave our presentation. At the end of that presentation, there were some questions about safety, about access, and Saritich presented a plan for a sidewalk along the north side of the building, and also there was some discussion about the signage and some questions about the signage. And as a result, Mr. Bree agreed to work with staff if there were some improvements that were needed with signage. We're prepared to answer any questions that the commissioners may have, and will reserve the rest of the time for rebuttal.
Thank you. You have about five minutes and 20 seconds. Any questions for the petitioner at this point? I guess my question is, in relation to the site plan and the signage, are you prepared to add that pedestrian walkway? Or what is your plan at this point?
Yes, if that's the commission's recommendation, we're prepared to add it.
Okay. And same thing for signage? Do you have any sort of sense as to how you would address that?
Yes, we've actually, since hearing your concerns last time, prepared a new packet of new wayfinding signage for around the building, or improvements to the existing wayfinding signage, which we could distribute if you'd like.
Okay. If that's what you're going to propose, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
And while James is getting that out, Mr. Spohays, did you have a question?
No, I think you took care of it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Did I miss somebody?
Everybody got a packet?
James, can you?
Before we go to a public hearing, does anyone have any questions? I know you just, we could, you want to glance at it, or do you want to have them walk through what their proposal is, or you want to wait till after hearing? What's the will of the commission at this point? Brandon?
Given that this was just laid in front of us, I'd love to have them walk us through it briefly.
Okay, so that's a question. If either you or your designer could do that, that'd be great.
Okay. My name is James Dougherty. I'm with Rem Architects. We're retained by Saritich. First sheet in the pack is just basically a map that indicates locations of the proposed signage, walking around sort of in a clockwise manner from the west side of the Sears store around the front to the east side of the building. Slide one is, shows a view from inside the mall facing east, how we would provide "you are here" exhibits that are sort of wayfinding signs to show how you would move through Sears to get to the Nordstrom Rack store. The next slide is just an exhibit of what that graphic might look like, show that you are here, and then the route either within Sears to get to the Nordstrom Rack, or how you would circulate around the, which would be the north side of the building. Sign location number two just shows what that sign would look like on the corner of the building. You'd have to refer back to the first sheet to see where that location number two is. It's the northwest corner. And then the opposite side, for people walking the other direction, would be guided to the mall by way of the sidewalk. So you see the exhibit showing you what it would look like facing north, and then the opposite side facing south. Slide three, or location three, as it shows on the map, somewhat near the enclosed dumpster area, or, I'm sorry, you can see the sign on the corner of the building showing the mall, providing wayfinding to the mall, where the opposite side of that would direct you to the Nordstrom Rack. Location number four, doesn't show on the key map, but it's on the back corner of the loading dock. It's an existing location. Oh, yeah, it's white inside that blue zone, again indicating you, there's an existing, in this photo, you can see where the existing signage is. We're pulling that signage down so it's more visible, and we're changing slightly the graphics on that. Number five is just an exhibit kind of showing the proposed new sidewalk and parking configuration on the north side of the building to just assist pedestrians on making their way around without having to circulate through traffic.
James, that maintains two-way traffic through there? You're able to have the width through the drive aisle there? That's still two-way?
Yeah. It's a six-foot wide walk.
But I mean, the vehicular access is...
So what happened? If you look at the left-hand side of this exhibit, we used to have head-in parking, and that's been changed. There was a, the reason this wasn't done originally is there was not enough width on the lot, so what we did is changed that head-in parking to parallel parking for that western portion to provide the clearance to get that extra six-foot walk in. Six, just a sort of an image study showing how wide that walk would be, enhancements of lighting to show how you'd make your way around that loading dock area. Seven, just continues that path around, sort of as we look from node to node with the signage, both as we see it and then what would appear on the opposite side. Eight would appear as a blade sign. It's a little bit misleading. The graphics would be revised, but as you face the sign from the left-hand side, say you're coming out of the entry to Nordstrom Rack, it would be the exhibit that you see, and the opposite side would provide guidance for people in the parking lot, most likely indicating how they would get to the mall or to Sears. Nine is sort of an intermediate. There's a sign, you can kind of see it in the background in this perspective photo, but the distance is kind of long to perceive the graphics, so we're cutting that distance in half by providing more signage, again, as shown in this exhibit. Ten is an existing sign that's there. It's just included in our wayfinding map. And then 11 is actually, as you come out of Sears, on the backside of the column, which would be the northernmost column, there would be a sign indicating the direction to Nordstrom Rack for a minute coming out. The other thing that we're showing here is a little bit more enhanced lighting so that the entryway to Sears is a little bit more popped up. And then finally, exhibit 12 is actually on the, would be the southeast corner of the Sears store, indicating how you would get around the existing sidewalk all the way around on the south side of the building.
Thank you for walking us through. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you, and to the chair. On slide number six, can you speak a little further to the, is a raised sidewalk is what you're proposing?
Yes. A six-inch high curb separated, just like all the other sidewalks around the building.
And as that protrudes into the, what is now currently the driving pathway, any thought, pros and cons as to using a bollard system to protect the pedestrians in lieu of a raised sidewalk, for example?
We haven't discussed that, but this is similar. Because we've reconfigured the parking spaces and pushed the drive aisle and the parking farther to the north, it's really the same level of safety or hazard for everywhere else around the mall, but there's no bollards.
What about the hours of operation of the loading dock? Is it, would it be a hindrance if we limited the hours of the loading dock operation and the pickup of garbage to non-working, non-store hours?
Is that what all the stores are constrained to in the mall today?
Pardon me?
Are all the stores constrained to those conditions in the mall today? Because there's several loading docks around the entire mall. This is not the only loading dock at the mall. They're all exterior.
Limiting the hours of the loading dock, back to my question, is that an issue? Would that been pinched? I don't know when your normal hours that you're operating now. I've observed that the trash pickup, for example, is occurring about 5:00 a.m.
Asking, is that a condition on the rest of the mall today? Does the rest of the mall, are they being...
I'm not speaking to the rest of the mall. I'm speaking to this situation here.
I think it would, it could be unfair to condition just Nordstrom Rack to those conditions.
We don't have a raised sidewalk cutting through the loading dock area in any of the other loading dock areas around the mall.
The sidewalk actually at the loading dock is going to be striped, and there are other loading docks at the mall that don't have sidewalks. Yeah?
Perhaps that's shown on exhibit seven.
Right. So that's not raised in front of the actual sidewalk. That's a striped condition, and then alongside the wall, screened wall, it becomes a raised condition.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Strike. Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've got a quick question about the transitions from the crosswalks at grade to the raised walks. Do you intend to have a ramped?
Yes. It'd be a requirement of all the accessibility codes, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
So I think this is the same plan that you put in front of us at the last meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Has, there's been no changes since the last meeting?
No.
Okay. Did you do any consensus building, or did you reach out to the other stakeholders here? I mean, obviously, particularly Kargatstein Properties and some of the other tenants. Did you talk to them about the plan, or, I mean...
Since we last presented it, no.
Okay. And I believe I asked this question last time, but I'm just, to put it on the record again, so you guys believe you have the right to re-stripe the parking lot in this area according to the CCNRs in the shopping center?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anybody else? Okay. Like I said, you have five minutes, 24 seconds left for rebuttal.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite members of the public for the public hearing. If you did not testify previously, now is the time to testify. Reminder, you'll state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to testify, and the light goes to the middle when you have about a minute left.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Roger Davis. I'm owner of Lemon Tree, and this is my wife, Mariah Davis, Lemon Tree at Sears Property. And we have a few things that we are concerned about also with this. So, Mariah?
My biggest obstacle that I've personally heard my customers mention is the confusion of getting into the Nordstrom Rack. We've explained to them that they have to walk through the Sears store, walk on the outside to the left to access the Nordstrom Rack, and then they look at me and go, "Well, I'm going to have to do that another day," because they don't want to go and go through all the effort to get into the Nordstrom Rack location. So the confusion that we're getting, we have a primarily women-owned, women shoppers in our store, and they don't feel comfortable with walking either around the building or having to take this huge route to get to the Nordstrom Rack. I would imagine that the same goes for the Nordstrom Rack customers that want to come to the mall. When it comes to coming into the mall, they're going to come back another day. So all of a sudden now, we've lost the customer base. We've lost the crossflow of traffic coming into the mall, because if they're not coming back that day, how many days is it going to be before they come into the mall? The second concern that I have is that, as a woman, I'm pretty, I can stand on my own. That's all fine and good. But if I were to leave the building, and it's dark, and it's cold, I'm on a mission to my car. I'm not going to walk on a sidewalk. I'm not going to go where it might not be well-lit. This is anchorage we're talking about. I appreciate that these men have spent a great deal of time and energy and money to putting into these plans a nice sidewalk that's lit, but as a woman and knowing that my shoppers are also women, I would never walk on that sidewalk in the winter, in the dark, ever. So now I'm thinking about my customer base, those customers that I have, I can rest assured that at least 30 or 40% of those people would not walk on that sidewalk either, especially if it's dark and cold outside. And I guess for our business perspective, my husband and I are very dedicated to our business. We're two and a half years in the mall. We've had a really good turnout for our company. We've grown an amazing amount, but at now, we feel like we're losing customers. We were excited when Nordstrom Rack was coming. We felt the demographic was going to be a new demographic, a new type of customer, and when Nordstrom Rack announced that they weren't putting in the door, then we lost that.
Thank you for your testimony. Let me just see if you have, are you in the queue, Mr. Walker? Or is that from before? This from before? Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annie Milson. I'm a local resident, and I would like to advocate for an interior entrance leading from Nordstrom Rack into the mall. As a mother of two children, I've found it difficult to get my kids safely across the street from the east side of the mall, whether it was Sears or the Rack at the time. It is much easier to enter from the north or the south of the mall, especially with a stroller or slow-walking little feet trailing behind. My kids are reluctant to shop at all, and if I can get them quickly between stores, avoiding narrow sidewalks so that everyone can hold hands, it is simply easier. For this reason, I think having an interior entrance from the mall into the Rack would increase family shopping for many people and would improve safety for car traffic on the east side of the mall by decreasing pedestrian vehicle interaction. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Raymond Rouse. I've had a jewelry store...
Spell your last name, sir.
Rouse, R-O-U-S-E.
Thank you.
And my parents moved up here, drug me up here, homesteaded property, so I've been here since four years old. And I remember Sears when it had a little restaurant. I remember the candy store. So it just brings back really fond memories of the Sears store. And it's almost sad to see possibly Sears go in the way of Montgomery Ward's and other big-box retailers that haven't been able to adapt to, just, for example, like Kohl's model. I don't want to get off the subject, so I'm going to get back to what we're here for, and that's a safety issue. A safety issue. A safety issue. I was so excited here when the Rack was coming. I was like, "This is going to be great. This is going to bring all kinds of people into the mall, and everyone's going to win." Makes sense to me. And I haven't really been following this completely, so I'm a little new at what you've guys discussed, and certainly new with the new zoning plan that came about. I haven't seen that to see if that satisfies what we're here for, but noticeable design flaws that were either ignored or worse overlooked. Customers... Customers' inconvenience is a situation, mom and kids, they brought up valid reasons why that could be dangerous. And I'm sure somebody's brought this up before, that if by chance there is ever an accident, God forbid a fatality, that will be on the commission, or Saratage as well. So I think it's in our best interest to really make this work for us Alaskans. I believe the Rack, possibly in their agreement with Saratage, with leasing, the more money they make, the more money Saratage makes. So if the Rack does good, Saratage is going to make more money. And at the end of the day, that's what it's about, it's about making money. You know, let's not shy away from profit, or, profit's not a dirty word. So we want to get that up. And I don't see where money would be an issue for bringing, I mean, this to fruition, a situation where we can resolve this, with Warren Buffett as the second-largest shareholder of this company, which is great. That's bringing big business, big money, and that's a good thing.
Thank you for your-
And we're happy that Saratage is here-
Sir, your time's-
-for that, but unfortunately-
Sir, your time is up. I don't see any questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, no questions?
I don't see any questions, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to testify?
Set for short people here. Good evening, everyone, my name is Levi Nilson. I have been a mall patron for pretty much my entire life. I am also a mall vendor, I run the Santa Claus at the mall, and I have been doing that for 15 years, so I have a fair amount of experience in the mall during the most chaotic parts of the season. I don't know about any of you, but all this discussion of signs has me more confused than I was before. I don't think signage is going to mitigate the safety issues that are presenting themselves currently. The way that the parking was laid out from the beginning is problematic. If they had simply put the parking on the other side against the building, they could have included a sidewalk there, parked everybody nose-in to the building, people could have gotten out of their cars, immediately stepped onto the sidewalk and walked safely across the building space. They didn't do that. They also did not put an interior entrance, therefore people are forced to go outside the building, possibly walking on icy streets. I can tell you that last year I observed three falls as people were transitioning between the building and their parking spaces on that thoroughfare. Additionally, it concerns me that the petitioners were saying they were going to rotate those parking spaces. Currently, those parking spaces were nose-in, so therefore when you opened your door, there was another vehicle next to you, you could get out safely, take care of your business, load your bags, unload your children, do whatever you need to do. If we rotate those parking spaces so that they are parallel with the thoroughfare, you will be forcing people to open their doors into traffic. This is a major issue, and it will not improve the safety, in fact, it could actually make it worse. So I would encourage you not to accept a rotation of the parking spaces and the inclusion of a partially-raised sidewalk as mitigating the safety issues that this particular site plan represents. I would strongly encourage you to enforce a requirement that they install an interior entrance. I had many customers come through and say, "I didn't understand how to get from the Rack to you and to the rest of the mall, and it's so confusing now, it used to be so easy. It's the easiest mall in Anchorage, it's very old, it's one big, long stretch." More signs are not what we need. I don't need a "you are here, and you need to walk over here, and then around here, and then get on the sidewalk, and then go across the loading bay, and then go around the sidewalk again, and then come inside the mall." That's just too confusing. Thanks.
Thank you.
I've got to follow Santa Claus. Hi, my name is Jonathan White, I own Steam Dot Coffee Roasters, and one of our four retail locations is proudly in the mall at Sears, on the Benson side. First, I want to thank you guys for hearing this, I know you've been going through this and hearing a lot of testimony. As a business owner, I'll likely just echo what a lot of other business owners have been saying. I think the most important issue here for a business owner in the mall is this disconnect that's been created with all the other businesses and the two on the northern light side, or the Seward Highway side. It's hard enough to do business as a small business owner without having even higher barriers to climb over and have your customers have to climb over, especially in the winter. As you all know, it gets cold here, it rains in the summer, it's hard to get customers to come to your door to begin with, but to make them come to the same location twice is proving to be even more challenging, having someone park in one location. And I would imagine it's the same for Nordstrom Rack, if someone is coming to another store in the mall to have to get back in their car, go through a fairly confusing parking lot and end up on the other side. I believe it's seven times further for someone to walk from that part of the mall to the rest of the mall as it was when Sears had the entrance into the mall before. It's a pretty big task, or a pretty big hurdle, to ask a customer to get over any time of the year. And for a business owner to have to, or, a business owner that has made the type of investment we've made at the Mall of Sears, and all the business owners have made, it creates a disconnect that's proven to be fairly challenging. It is a unique situation, we have an entrance on the Benson side of the mall, one of only two businesses at the mall that have that unique situation, but that hasn't made it any easier because we also have a mall entrance. And the bulk of our business, that very important mixed business use in the mall, is severely hampered by not having this entrance into the two stores on the end. I don't like anyone, I don't like boards and commissions telling me how to run my business, and I'm sure the fine folks don't either, but this commission has a fairly wide breadth of requirements that it requires businesses to go through to open. Everything from lighting to signage to parking, this seems to be a fairly no-brainer, public interest issue. I'm sure the petitioners don't want you telling them what to do, but this, above all, safety business, is a public interest issue, not merely a business-interest issue. So I wish you luck, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. I got a question from Mr. Strike.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your testimony. The current structure as it's situated with the space behind the Rack to the east, to the west, I believe it's programmed for three additional spaces.
Right.
None of those have access or would have access to the mall as well.
Yeah, and the new configuration.
Same issue? But how would you link three different locations in that regard into the mall unless you change the whole structure of the mall?
Well, now probably isn't the time to fix that. I would guess the time to address that was in design for the Nordstrom Rack, and how that one, you know, how that came together. I don't know, I don't have those answers. There's really smart people at Kargatstein and with the petitioners that can figure that out, but they would face the same hurdles, maybe less so because they're closer, and the northern sidewalk would help. But for the folks further away, and for the folks at the other end of the mall, and there is a huge open space at that west side of the mall that will have a potentially powerful tenant someday, it doesn't seem to make sense to have that mall, I think most people think what a mall is, is an open space connected, to have one end of it completely closed off from 80 to 85 percent of the other businesses.
Because as it sits right now, there are, there would be four spaces in that area without access, direct access into the mall.
I understand, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, Mike Thomas, born here in '67, so the Sears Mall is, holds a nostalgic place in my heart, it's the first one I was ever in. I'd urge the commission to reconsider their approval of this plan, based not only on the safety concerns that have been addressed, but because the plan, I think, fails to comply with the municipality's own codes, specifically those that relate to the maintenance of a compatible and efficient development pattern. The Sears Mall was Alaska's first enclosed mall, and it always has been. And the Rack knew that when they came up, and Saratage knew that when they leased it, that it was an enclosed mall. And so they should have anticipated that this location was going to require two entrances, unlike their preferred configuration of one entrance, in order to be developmentally consistent with the mall as it stands. And I think this is of particular relevance for the point that you made, is that that remainder space is being actively marketed with the intention, as was noted in previous testimony, that those spaces too would be sequestered from the rest of the mall. And I think that's a further deviation that has the potential to change the character of the mall, but it does in no way maintain a compatible and efficient developmental process. And I'd like you also to consider that I don't believe this plan complies with the specific standards for a large retail establishment as it relates to access amenities and the mitigation of negative impacts. Part of that is pedestrian access, that's been discussed. Aside from safety concerns, as you've heard from some of these other people testifying, their plan is not sufficiently accessible, nor is it sufficiently convenient to pedestrians, customers, and employees. And I think that's a valid consideration for our community. The second part of that would be the community spaces. I think it's a bit disingenuous for them to claim that interior space under the mantle of compliance, yet have constructively impeded access to that space by the lack of an interior entrance and an unsuitable exterior entrance. And so to that end, I think an interior entrance is necessary for the approval of this plan. But more importantly, I'd like you to consider subsection O, which is the northern design element. The mall as it stood before the Rack was the epitome of a northern design element. It had the interior spaces, and it had the gathering spaces, and I think the language of that subsection stating that the commission may require provisions of design elements that address Anchorage's distinct geography gives you a pretext to require that that plan include an interior connection to remain consistent and provide the safe, convenient access that our codes in Title 21 was supposed to provide.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Thanks a lot. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I have with me a response to the legal analysis that was done by staff in their report, which we received on either Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday. The Fourth of July weekend impeded a lot, and here it is, and I recently reviewed your late public hearings submitted, and I would ask permission to turn these documents in, and it basically is the same analysis, or it's an analysis of the same code provisions that are set forth in their code, with a lot more emphasis on the fact that we're moving away from compliance with the new code, which was a critically important element when this ordinance was written in 2001. Many of you know that I've worked in land use and with local government over a long period of time, and it sometimes amazes me, it's been 42 years, and I remember working with Alan Teshy, and mainly arguing with Alan Teshy, because I represented the retailers who would be subject to this. But in the end, one of the key elements was the idea that you could be deemed conforming, and you were required to move toward compliance of conformity when and if you made exterior renovations and so on, or when you made, I don't know how they define this, but something to do with interior expansion, I don't know how you do an interior expansion without affecting the exterior, but nonetheless, those were the conditions that required you to move toward compliance, move toward the conditions and so on that are required by the code that was written in '01. I wish staff would have done the analysis that Mr. Minz did and put in this document, and I would urge you to read it, and it's nine pages, so I would urge you to read it before you make your decision. And I will tell you right now that it's our position that this is a critical element to this case. You need to understand the code provisions clearly and thoroughly. I've read the staff's analysis, and it does not give you a clear and thorough, it just mainly cites the language in the code and says basically, "It's okay." This one talks about why it's not okay. And if we're going to follow what the intent of the code was, which was move toward compliance over time, then you need to know the how of it and the why of it, and why this plan that they have filed does not move us toward compliance. In fact, quite the contrary, it moves us away from compliance. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to be able to hand to the clerk 15 copies here, and you can tell me whether it's acceptable or not, but I would like to give them to you in any event.
Sure, and Mr. Coffey, please state your name for the record too, please. No.
Pardon me, my name is Dan Coffey. Having lived here 70 years, I just assume everybody knows me.
Well, we all know you, the people listening elsewhere.
No, I know, I should have stated my name, I've been here in front of the microphone 100 times, I should have done that, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. And any questions for Mr. Coffey? Mr. Jorgez?
Thanks, Mr. Coffey. Are you representing any particular group? Dan?
I'm sorry.
Over here, bud.
Oh, there you are, yeah, okay.
No worries. Are you representing any particular group, or is this individual testimony?
No, I'm representing Kargatstein, I was hired by them last week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
When will we know about the acceptance of the documents, or are they accepted?
Well, they get accepted. I think, I may ask if it's appropriate to call a brief recess to read the document, if there are commissioners that decide to do that before we invite the petitioner back up, if, is there any desire to do that? Yeah? So we will spend a moment standing down to read the document, and then we'll reconvene. I want to make sure that I get everybody up here to testify.
Yes, I thank you for that consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Thanks. Anybody else wishing to testify? Anybody at all? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to call for a brief, about 10-minute recess, and at that point, I'll invite the petitioner back up for rebuttal. Thank you. All right, bringing everybody back to session. I think where we were is we'd like to invite the petitioner forward for rebuttal at this And then there may be some questions, I know I have a couple of questions for staff, likely.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'd like to address the commissioners on several points that were raised. I think I heard Mr. Santa Claus say that he wanted you to enforce the requirement for an interior entrance. And I'd just like to point out that there is no requirement for an interior entrance, and, so that request really is off the mark. The question of the interior entrance is an improvement to the interior of the building that is specifically excluded from the process that we're undergoing right now. And so that, the process that we went through started with the commission deciding that this site plan met the requirements of the code. And the commission specifically asked, or required as conditions, that the petitioner meet certain requirements, including striping for pedestrians, including landscaping, including signage for access, and those were complied with, those conditions were complied with. So at that point, there was an appeal to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals heard a number of different arguments, including an argument there should be an interior entrance, including arguments that there was a lack of code compliance on a number of issues, and the Board of Appeals found that you all made the right decision, that the decision approving the site plan was correct, and upheld it. Then there was the appeal to the Superior Court, in which the only issue appealed was whether or not there should be, have been, a public hearing. And the court found there should have been a public hearing, which is why we're here today, but did not disturb any of the findings of the Board of Appeals, which said this plan met code compliance, that it met all the requirements, that the commission was correct in the first instance in meeting that. So we're here today to listen to the public testimony, and the petitioner has proposed certain addition- certain additional improvements that met the concerns that were raised by the public.
The only thing I'd like to add is that we'd be happy to go back to the store and discuss with them hours of operations of deliveries if you feel like there's a better solution, or there's a time period when you all feel that it's more prudent for the deliveries to be made or trash pickups to be made. But we don't actually operate the store, and so unless it's a condition that would be implied or imposed upon the entire, all of the store operators, but we're happy to talk to them nonetheless, happy to talk to Nordstrom Rack and Sears nonetheless, our two tenants. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions, final questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Walker? It's obviously much more complicated than this, but really, you're proposing an exterior solution to this problem, and everyone else is proposing an interior solution to the problem. Can you give me a rough idea? I mean, you've got to have an estimate in mind. What's the cost difference between these two things?
Today, the cost of imposing an interior solution is, I think, not even an option because of the way it would disrupt Nordstrom Rack's entire business. It's not the way they operate their business. They operate from a single entrance. Sears is already set up to have the two entrances. It's not really an option. How much is the changes we're proposing? New signage sidewalk, the striping, altering some of the existing landscape, replantings, probably $100,000 to $200,000?
Thank you. Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you. And the lighting was included in that as well?
Yes.
The parallel parking is adding, is identified as approximately six parking spaces. Is that going to leave sufficient room between the raised walkway and the driveway, the two lanes, two lanes of traffic? It looks like there may be a little chicane going there, a little zigzag.
By space six? The six parallel, that's one, two, three, four, five, six parallels? Parking spaces just happens to be six on number six, but, or on the cover page?
On number five. You've identified the six parallel parking spots there adjacent to the loading dock and the new proposed raised walkway.
On the building side, those are all existing.
I'm not talking about the building side. On the parallel parking and the raised sidewalk, there's going to be a limited area, and there's two lanes of traffic.
Yes.
Is there going to be enough room there?
It's more than a 20...
We maximized the ability to have a wider walkway, but all of the drive lanes, including where adjacent to the parallel parking spaces, meet or exceed the city standards. Yes.
But there is going to be a bit of a chicane going there.
It appears as if there's going to be, and that's really, if you see that, there is a little bit of a chicane, and that was partly purposeful. And we actually took another one or two parking spaces out at the, I guess it would be the northeast end, so that we could actually create that as more of a visual choker, so that it would kind of give that signal to people that they're in a confined space, they should slow down. We've also talked about putting in speed bumps. So with the combination of the chicane reinforcing kind of a choker point at that location and sacrificing another parking space, we think that we've addressed that issue of both speed, people will act differently. And, you know, there was a comment about the parallel parking spaces and stepping right out into traffic. I mean, this is exactly like downtown, so if we can't do it here, we ought to shut down downtown, I guess. I don't want to be flippant, but...
Every end cap on the parking lot on the other side, on the southern side of it.
So, but you're good to pick up the fact that the design does accommodate for, by losing some of the head-in parking length and going to parallel, we lose the number of parking spaces. We maintain a 24-foot minimum drive aisle, six-foot, six-inch raised sidewalk with enhanced lighting over it to create another area of safety. You had earlier asked a question about bollards. And bollards can be a benefit, and they can be a hazard, because snow removal is a real problem when you put bollards in. Part of the safety factor is that going to the parallel parking spaces means that there aren't any people backing out that could potentially cross the entire length of the driveway onto the drive, onto the walking surface. So with the extra lighting being raised up six inches, we think that's very adequate protection.
And I would suggest that in your presentation, though, it wasn't spoken about, you have presented the speed bumps in the proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Potter, your name for the record, please.
My name is Tim Potter with Al.
You and Coffey should go hang out, since you have this sort of same characteristic.
He just got back into town, so we're going to do that after the meeting.
Right. Any other questions for the petitioner? Any at all? Last shot. Okay, thank you. Hearing none, the public hearing is now... Oh, Spring? For staff. Okay, I'm actually going to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Go ahead, John.
Yes, I was just wondering, staff, if the commission elects to go along with the site plan that was laid on the table here, what kind of, how would we phrase a condition of approval? There's no real sheet numbers or anything, and I'm just wondering how that would work.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring. My recommendation on that is it's not unusual, actually, to receive design or design modifications during a planning and zoning meeting or urban design. And my suggestion would be that the commission could accept the design that was presented at the date of tonight's meeting, July 11, 2016, and that with staff coordination, the final product, or the final design, be substantially in accordance with that plan.
Anything else, John? Any other questions? I had a couple of questions, just to confirm. Traffic engineer has not reviewed this proposed circulation plan. Is that true?
That is true.
So that would still happen at a... So the issues relating to adequate lengths and parking access and all that will be reviewed, and I presume that if the traffic engineer finds that parallel parking is unsafe, it would have to go away entirely?
It could.
Okay. Could you speak, the petitioner in the last, in their rebuttal mentioned the issue of interior space, and we have understood that requirements that happen inside the building are not under the authority of this particular review. Can you confirm that that's the case? What ability would we have to compel interior changes to the design?
Our interpretation of code, and understand we are operating under old Title 21, our interpretation of the code is that we have no authority to require an interior connection. And the way that I, what I base that on is Section 2155-130. And it basically, about halfway through the paragraph on this particular topic, it states, "This section shall not, however, apply to the interior remodeling, renovation, or repair to interior portions of large retail establishments existing on the date of this, on the date this section becomes effective." So basically, it quite clearly states within old Title 21 that the interior renovation, interior improvements, except under Title 23, which is building safety, are not the purview of the commission or us as the planning department.
Thank you, Terry. Did you have a question, Mr. Walker?
Yes, yes. So I made my way through Mr. Coffey's letter here, and, you know, it makes a lot of particular references to safety and public safety and that kind of stuff, pedestrian safety, circulation, those kinds of things. And forgive me if it's sitting here in front of me somewhere in the six-inch tall stack of paperwork, but is there something in the old code that particularly requires us to consider the Nordstrom Rack store as part of the mall? So, I mean, if you look at how new retail developments are, you know, what's happening now in retail, the Power Center is the new model, and there oftentimes, you know, you have a, you have a small box or a medium, mid-box, or even a big box disjointed from the rest of the mall. There aren't interior spaces, and this is kind of unique to our climate. I think that these types of properties are even alive today. You know, they aren't in so many other parts of the country. So I guess I'm thinking, if this was a standalone store, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. Everybody would be driving to Nordstrom Rack as a destination, and they'd be, you know, buying their fancy clothes cheap or whatever it is they do there. So is there something that requires us to consider it part of the mall, and/or can, I mean, can we think about this as if it were a standalone store?
I think that we don't consider it as necessarily a part of the mall. Imagine for a moment that we have downtown businesses all wall-to-wall throughout the downtown. We don't require, we have no requirements for those stores that they ought to have connections between buildings. Some do. For example, the Fifth Avenue Mall obviously has a complete interior, very comfortable place to shop. But the bulk of our downtown stores, you go outside. You go outside to the next store, or three stores down, or however many it is. So Title 21 doesn't get into the issue about interior connectivity in any case, or that we need to consider that in terms of the adjacent. In fact, a lot of winter cities have grappled with the idea of skywalks and other things, and whether that's really beneficial or not, and a lot of them have shied away from that.
I have one more question to the chair, and this is really more out of curiosity. Have any of these stakeholders on either side of the issue reached out to you guys at all, or tried to help become a part of the solution, or work on a solution with you guys? Or is this really, have we drawn the battle lines in the sand here, and then the factions
There's been one suggestion from one of the parties here, I think, that they could try to work out some agreement, but that was an approach to us. And to my knowledge, that was not an approach that was made, for example, between Saratage and the others, not at least recently. There was an attempt, by my understanding, at the beginning of the process, to try to find a solution that would work for them. Thank you.
One question to follow up. Terry, you mentioned that you could consider this kind of as a standalone, and yet, one of the standards for community spaces, we heard in testimony that they're satisfying community spaces because of the spaces in the mall. So it strikes me that we've got to have one thing, we've got to have it one way or the other, not both, right? So either they comply with community spaces, and frankly, I'm not sure what the specific community space is of a redone shopping area. Does that mean a couple places to sit down? Does that mean an outdoor plaza? I mean, I think there's quite a bit of subjectivity in there. But I'm wondering if there is anything within the store that is to be construed as meeting community spaces?
I believe at the last session, the last meeting that we had, that Nordstrom Rack indicated that they had dedicated space inside their store fulfilling that requirement. And you might ask the petitioner, I'm not certain, but there, I don't believe that they're relying on community space inside the mall, but I can't say for certain that's the case.
Is it appropriate to ask him to come up and ask that question?
I think it is.
Could we have a response to that? Is there any place that can be construed internal to the Nordstrom Rack that has at least an interior public area for customers and visitors?
Yes, there is.
What is it?
There's seating. Seating, there's Brian...
Your name, sir, further.
Brian Walsh, W-A-L-S-H. There's maybe two couches and three chairs close to the changing area.
Okay. Thank you. Did someone just pop up because you want to follow up on that? Go ahead, Mr. Strike.
I did. I was there yesterday, or earlier this week. There are four chairs and one table just outside of the dressing room area. I've never seen a couch, two couches now, so that's grown since last meeting. Haven't seen, is the plan to put some more in? Sounds like you are going to expand it. Is that a yes or a nod of a head, or, I don't know. You tell us what you have.
I just want to know what's there. I don't...
I want to know what they have and what they plan on putting in now.
We don't operate the store, but, so Brian was speaking a little, but if you said that you were there yesterday, and there's four chairs and a table, I trust there's four chairs and a table.
I agree with that. Thank you. Mitzi, did you have a question of staff, or can I let these guys sit down?
Actually, just something added that. I was at the store today, and I did observe there were, there was a small seating area directly inside the door.
Okay. Thank you for answering that question. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I lost track of where we are. Mr. Sporhais, are you up next? You have a question?
Not a question, but got a motion on the table.
I don't have a second yet. I'm still taking some questions for staff right now, if you don't mind. So we'll come back to you in a sec. Mr. Strike, anything else? Any, everybody good? Okay, Mr. Sporhais, what's your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based upon testimony from public, also by authority through the staff and Terry here this evening...
Yeah, I just need, I need just your simple motion.
I'm going to make my recommendation and my motion for approval based upon the Department recommendations 1 through 8 on Page 11 and Page 12. In addition, I'd like to add that the design modifications be accepted this evening that we received from the petitioner to further be examined by the traffic engineer and planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Sporhais. So I interpret that to mean that you are adding a condition number nine to accept the proposal that the petitioner laid out. Does that include their signage plan as well, or are you just referring to the pedestrian pathway?
Both.
Thank you.
The signage, the pedestrian pathway, and the traffic engineer.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Would you like to speak to that motion, Brennan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. To speak frankly, it's a tough decision. We've all know that. We're bounded by what we're, we have the authority to do through the municipality, through our appointment here. Was it missed? Perhaps, in the new Title 1, new Title 21. Hopefully, in the future, tend to take a quote from one of the commissioners, kind of they actually put the cart behind the horse for future tenants. But I believe that through all the documents, we have superior kind of finding of facts that this is, in fact, what the best plan is to mitigate the safety concerns that's been expressed by the public. I sometimes get lost in the fact that this is site-specific, but you look at other malls, other pad sites, people get out in traffic all the time. And I believe that the petitioner did about as good as anyone can do to mitigate any kind of safety concerns that we have as a commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spring.
Just a clarification of the motion, if I could. The motion, I'd like to reread first, I guess.
You're talking about the condition nine primarily?
Please.
I mean, I'm paraphrasing, but to accept the petitioner's proposal for additional pedestrian circulation and signage subject to municipal review.
Okay.
Specifically, the traffic department. Does that work?
So this would, this site plan would be approved, part of the approval if it's accepted by the... the traffic engineer.
Yeah, and I think I'm going to ask that people speak to what are the important aspects of this if in fact you support it, because I want to know what's negotiable and non-negotiable if it ends up being disputed with the traffic engineer. And what is it that in particular makes it acceptable or an improvement as there are findings made? Mr. Spohays?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. And the reason why that I put this in part of the motion is I relied upon part of the testimony from an applicant that said that this met the standard codes specifically in the parallel parking area that was in question and also proved that the parallel parking, which seemed to be the kind of a moment of, a part of contention, that this is actually a safer layout because they're not backing all the way into traffic.
Yeah, that's fine. What I'm really looking for is that is for the commission to make a statement related to the conditions of 2150-320 and as it relates to pedestrian access, the specific section on pedestrian access. I mean, that's what I'm looking for and whether this achieves it or it does not, and if it does not, well, then I want to hear that too. So, but thank you, Mr. Spohays. I understand your testimony to mean you believe it does. Mr. Strike, go ahead.
Yes, and in regards to that amendment number nine, I felt that there's some limitation language that was proposed in the attempts to identify some of the specific components of what was proposed in our handout. And by proposing specific items, we exclude others. Is it your intent that this total package that was presented for the improvements for the walkway, which includes lighting, which includes speed bumps, the parallel parking, is it your intent that all of that be incorporated or only those items that you specified to be incorporated?
Thank you, Commissioner Strike, for all of those items to be incorporated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spinelli, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Sure. I support the motion. I think the petitioner's packet provided, addressed site lighting, it provides covered walkways, it does allow access into the interior of the mall through Sears on covered walkways, the raised sidewalks where possible, lighted sidewalks, I think will address the problem as much as possible and I just hope that we can get a solution. So, I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? I'm going to ask you either before or after the vote, but, okay, please vote. Motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yes, I think from what I heard from the tape of the previous public hearing and a little bit from tonight's public hearing is the key issue is whether or not the site plan moves towards conformity. So, I like to make a finding that this site plan, as amended and by the information that was laid on the table by the petitioner, does indeed move towards conformity. In particular, there's a couple of items that I had concern about in the original application, which was the elimination of the sidewalk on the north side. I think with the new proposal to reinstate basically the sidewalk, that that is going to solve that problem, that issue of moving towards conformity in that respect. The other condition that the staff proposed, which was to reinstate or rebuild the overhang to make it 60% of the frontage along the east side, also moves towards conformity or at least maintains the conformity expectations that are in the code. The code specifically states that 60% of the frontage should be, have an overhang or some type of canopy. So, this does include that. With respect to the community, living, the community issue, the community space, I think this is neutral with respect to that. It doesn't move towards or away from conformity. If I was looking at this as a new site plan, the big box store as a mall as a whole, and I was evaluating all the different requirements of this big box store, I would find that the mall, even with the Nordstrom Rack addition, would meet that requirement. There's lots of community space there. Doesn't mean necessarily that every part of it, of the mall or the development, has to have access to community space. I think the intent of that section was, let's provide some space for people to hang out and get to know their neighbors and whether or not every part of the facility has access to that immediately and direct, I don't think that was the intent of it. So, I think in that respect, that particular requirement is neutral with respect to moving toward conformity.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, and I would just echo, first of all, we are here, we were here to hold a public hearing. We've been asked to hold a public hearing, which we did not do the last time around, and I appreciate everybody coming out. There was quite a bit of testimony as well as some compelling video, I think, that illustrated, I think, a need for some improvement at this particular, on the sidewalk that's been proposed. I also heard a lot of the majority of the testimony asking that the orientation of this store be reoriented to allow for greater access and flow between businesses. I don't believe that our review here under the large retail establishment covers that particular goal of the code. Our review is to look at the aesthetic standards, the pedestrian standards and so forth, and I think that between the access through the Sears Mall and the access around, I believe that it complies. There were other choices that the petitioner could have made, but I believe that they comply with the code and that's the decision that everyone can live with. I think in the future, if Sears goes away, there continues to need to be an access through whatever store is there. So, again, I think what we're finding is that there's a dual, there are two access points from the western point, one around the outside of the building and one internally through the store. Mr. Walker, any additional finding?
This is obviously a very difficult decision. It's an imperfect building, an imperfect situation, and, you know, and we're imperfect people. There's a lot of people in this room who understand this code a lot better than we do and, you know, since we can't let Dan Coffey and Tim Potter duel Title 21 to solve this, I think this is, and we can't reorient the store. I just don't think that that's feasible. I think that this is the best solution. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. And I think ultimately, and I believe this is on the record, but I think the audience needs to know this, that our attorney, the attorney for this body, has told us that we are not, that we do not have the authority to speak to or to deal with the interior of the store. So, I just don't believe that we have that authority here today. So, anyway, those are my findings.
Thank you. That concludes this case. Appreciate everybody's involvement. Moving on to Case 2016-0054, could I have a motion to postpone?
Mr. Chair, in regard to Case 2016-0054, I move to postpone to 8116.
Thank you. Any objection? Hearing none. That case is postponed until August. Next up, if everyone's good with marching on, I'd like to ask that we hear staff presentations on both Case 2016-0063 and Case S-12285. This is in relation to an outdoor shooting range, a conditional use permit, as well as the underlying plat associated with it. So, if we could hear both staff reports, and I think when we get to it, we'll ask for public, kind of a joined public testimony on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for conditional use approval to allow an outdoor shooting range in the I-1 SL district in Birchwood. Currently, law enforcement agencies rent space at the neighboring Birchwood recreational shooting park. During Phase 1 of this project, the site plan shows four shooting ranges on this site, a range operations building and parking. Phase 2 is not fully developed at this time, but it would include a tactical village for simulated training areas and an academic building. The petitioner separately has made application for a replat of the properties from two lots into one. The planning department is, has found that the approval, the nine approval criteria for conditional use is met. The department is recommending approval of this conditional use for an outdoor shooting range in the I-1 SL district, subject to conditions 1 through 3 on Page 7. The department's also making a second recommendation for approval of Phase 2 of the project, although not yet designed. And I guess three other points that I would make, well, I'll say that condition of approval number three, so of the conditions of approval that the department is recommending, 1, 2, and 3, 1 and 2 are simply standard conditions of approval. Number 3 is, comes from Watershed Management Services, which recommended that the petitioner provide a lead management plan and also to provide a report on compliance with best management practices up to the planning department annually. So, that's what condition of approval number 3 says. We would also ask for a new condition of approval that is not written in your staff packet. The wording for that condition of approval would be, "If required by the plat, revise the site plan and landscape plan to show a trail." If required by the plat, revise the site plan and landscape plan to show a trail. It was, the non-motorized transportation coordinator reached out to us a couple hours ago, called up planning and said that, you know, that Commissioner Spring had reached out for more information on the plans and that the non-motorized transportation coordinator discovered that she had not provided comments on this, on this conditional use application and that, Mr. Spring was correct, that there is a planned trail in the adopted area-wide trails plan. What I would like to do is to hand out to you a photocopy of the area-wide trails plan so that you could see the trail that it shows. And this, I guess, evidences the need for that condition of approval. I think that Mr. Whitfield, thank you, Mr. Whitfield will speak to the plat right after me and he'll say a little bit more about this, I assume, and then you'll be able to ask any questions for clarification you might have. Two other things to say, Shelley Griffith, a manager in the Department of Health and Human Services, and she's the municipal noise expert, is here. So, we have a resource. She's at the end of the table. Shelley's here. She came out to answer any questions that the commission might have about noise in relation to this tactical range. And the last thing is, you know, one might ask, you know, why is the department recommending approval of Phase 2, although it's not designed yet? And the reason for that is, you know, there are no design standards for buildings with a type of development like this. And so, it seems to us that it's an unnecessary hurdle to require the applicant to return before the commission to show a site plan and landscape plan for a, you know, Phase 2 with really nothing for the commission to review against, other than the same conditions of approval criteria that we have. You know, the way that the condition of approval reads is that they'll have to comply with Title 21, the dimensional standards, the setbacks, the development design standards in Chapter 7, so any landscaping, parking, all those items would be covered through the normal review. So, that's the department's recommendation in terms of the conditional use. Thank you.
I get your point on Phase 2, but if that's the case, why show anything on the plan?
Well, the, I think that the reason for the conditional use permit is related to noise and the shooting range, but the simulation area and the associated building and the configuration of the parking, this is a secured site with the public will not have access to and will not be visible to the public. So, it seems to me an unnecessary burden for the applicant to return with a site plan for the commission to approve, where the commission has these nine general standards of approval criteria, which it would essentially have already dealt with in approving the shooting park. If the commission finds that the applicant should return before the commission, that's fine. You can just strike that condition of approval and when they design it, they'll come back before the commission. But it seemed to this planner that it just is unnecessary because you don't have any approval criteria related to, say, the design of the buildings. You would just sort of look at the configuration of the site and whether or not it meets the nine general, I mean, the value added of having it before.
I hear you. Thank you. I mean, I get your point. I have a question for you from Mr. Spring. Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yes, just to follow up on that particular comment by the Chair. The tactical village simulation training doesn't involve the shooting of firearms?
That's correct.
At all? It does not, he said.
It does not.
Okay. Question two, if I may, through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Unless somebody wants to follow up with that one. Noise study question. I wasn't unclear whether or not it, the noise study found that it met the nighttime standard, noise standard. Is it, was it, is it true or does it just meet the day 50 DRA?
Good evening. The noise standard for an industrial, when it meets up with a residential area, we average the two and it would be a 65. And so, for the average, it does come in at 60, according to the information they provided. So, it comes in below the standards of where an industrial area meets a residential area.
Through the chair, I didn't realize it was an average. Do you know what the nighttime, what it would, what kind of noise it would produce just solely at nighttime?
What they provided on Page 10 of their assessment is what I'm using.
Let me, what page in the packet is that, please?
Forty-three, I think.
Page 113.
Oh.
The nighttime residential level is 50 if it's only residential. Industrial is at 80. We take the average of the two where they meet and that's the property line.
Oh, so, I'm sorry. So, it's just an average of the land use standards, then? Residential, industrial, nighttime?
Yes, sir.
And so, the residential is 50?
Yes, sir.
And their simulation or whatever they use shows what at nighttime? What does it show, 60-something? What does it show, 60 something?
Their observed was 50 to 57 for a time-weighted average. They call it LEQ, which means over the entire hour, the average of the noise level was a 50 to a 57 at the Stoltz Road Site.
So you didn't average it, then it would exceed the residential nighttime standard, if you didn't average it?
If it was a residential meeting, a residential, yes, sir. But it's a residential meeting, an industrial.
Okay. Another question, please, to staff. Is the roadway adjacent to the petition site an easement or is it right of way?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, that was intended to be part of my plat presentation, but I'll answer it now. It is, in fact, an easement.
Through the chair, is there a problem with an easement if it's, there's anticipated to be additional developments beyond the site of the petition site? Because there's some industrial land to the south there that I'm assuming is going to need some access in the future.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, you know, dedicated right of way is always the desire. However, in looking at this particular site and the level of traffic, staff believes that an easement in this situation would suffice. And so if you look at the plating staff report, you'll see that the requirement for the easement is there.
Follow-up question, then. You say, yes, well, I agree with the traffic to and from the shooting site, I suppose, but how much industrial land, I-2 land is to the south there that could be developed? Rather, it's I-1 and I, I think it's I-1 SL, actually. I think it's owned by Ekutna, right?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, yes, the property is owned by two property owners in this particular area, the State of Alaska and Ekutna. And from what I remember, and I don't have a specific map in front of me to tell you exactly how much developable property there is, but there, the road ends shortly thereafter the property and it does not, does not appear to be a sizable amount of industrial land to be developed.
Okay, I might disagree with that, but I don't have the information, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strike.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. The tactical village, and I do note here that it identifies simulations and non-lethal munitions. I've built three of these and I know the APD has desired to use the one out at Fort Richardson and has used the one out at Fort Richardson. All of those are live fire. In fact, they involve breaching, hostage rescue, and explosives for breaching certain types of buildings, windows, et cetera. And that has been a desire for the APD to have such a training facility. Now I see this coming to fruition and that's not where they're going, based on what I'm reading here. So if approved under the cup, will that area remain non-lethal munitions? Or do they have the option of moving into a live-fire munitions, breach, explosive-type of environments, which would change the whole scenario for the sound?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, everything you said was correct and I misspoke. Mr. Strike, you're correct that there will be additional ranges and ammunition in the tactical village. I was wrong. I said that there wasn't, but that's not correct.
Well, the handout on page three does say it's simulation and non-lethal munitions.
It does say that, but if we begin at the beginning, it says, as part of this conditional use permit, approval is requested for the second phase of the site development. The second phase would include an academic building, tactical village, simulation training facility, and any ranges that are, any ranges that are not constructed as part of the first phase. So that, to me, reads live-fire. The academic building will be constructed adjacent to the warming building, providing additional training areas. At the time, the range operations building would be converted for additional storage space. The tactical village would be an, would be an area where law enforcement officers can perform training for specific scenarios with simulations, non-lethal munitions. The tactical village would be located in the southern portion of the parcel, as shown on the site plan. Additional site work and parking would be constructed with the new uses. Timing the second phase would be based on funding availability. So I, I think that it does, I guess when I read it the first time, I thought it did not, but in rereading it, it appears that, I mean, we'll have to ask them, right? But I think that they intend to have fire the way that you described.
And that has been APD's desire to have that type of facility, which goes well beyond the normal firing of handguns and/or rifles. It goes into explosives for breach and the sound elements of that is going to be two or threefold. In fact, the, when the, they do this out at Fort Richardson, many times they have to put out a notice that there will be live-fire exercises and they notify the surrounding areas that are well, much further than any distance that we have here in this site.
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, you know, I have no knowledge of any bombs. I don't --
They do this out behind Muldoon, in fact.
No, no, I mean to say that in terms of this application, which I've read, and I think we should hear from the --
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, and then you certainly have an option on whether or not you want to say okay with phase two, or notwithstanding the design issues, there may be operational issues that you have concern over. Mr. Walker? And then Francis, you're still in here, are you still in the, okay, go ahead, Brandon.
I had some, some questions specifically related to noise for the staff, through the chair. You had referenced adjacency to residential areas and unfortunately, the maps in our packet are literally shades of gray and white, so it's difficult to discern. But are you saying that the, the land that's immediately southwest of the subject site, is that zone for residential use? Because I don't see anything else around it that it would be adjacent and residential.
The two areas that are located in the study that I was provided are South Birchwood Loop Home, which is on JK Lane, and the other area is Stoltz Road Site.
Okay, so we're talking about, they're not adjacent, we're talking about the stuff that's on the other side of the airport and the railroad tracks and, I mean --
That's the nearest residential area.
Okay. So it sounds like we need some clarification on what's happening there, but I wanted to get a little bit of a point of reference relative to the airport. Do you have any data on the airport? Like, for example, what's the, what is the decibel level of a Cessna 185 on climb-out? I mean, it's got to be pretty significant and there's no restrictions on what time of day that can occur, I don't think, so.
In your packet, that is going to already be there. It's on page 110, in that area specifically.
I'm sorry, 110?
110.
Oh, I only read to 109, I'm sorry.
On page 110, it has the levels that were taken by the contracted company for those areas.
Okay, so that would be the line item, GAA or general aviation overflights? Is that, is that what that's --
That's what I take it to mean.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Can I go back to Mr. Whitfield? Can we have the staff report on the plat, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the plat is a fairly, fairly simple plat. It's a subdivision of one tract of land and one lot into one tract. There are three issues associated with this plating action. The first one, Mr. Spring already touched on, the dedication of right-of-way. The entire length of the roadway that would access this subdivision is, is dedicated easement. And when staff reviewed this case, we had to evaluate whether or not dedicated right-of-way would be of benefit. And being as though there is already easement that on several properties accessing this one, we determined that easement is, is, is good enough, so to speak. So with regard to that, there is a condition that requires them to ensure that there is an access easement with the state to ensure that, that legal and physical access to the property. There were two late comments that came in this afternoon, one from Watershed Management requesting a plat note. Staff has laid on the table tonight the specific language with regard to that. As the property is located in a flood hazard district, I'd be happy to read through that and cite that verbatim if the commission would like. And the third issue, again, was a late comment that came in from the non-motorized transportation coordinator with regard to coastal trail. And staff has recommended to the commission that a condition be placed on the plat that states, and I'll quote, "Resolve with the non-motorized transportation coordinator the need to dedicate a 20-foot-wide coastal trail easement along the east boundary of the proposed tract," end quote. I can go back and read the proposed plat note that Watershed had recommended, but you have it in front of you. If you'd like, I can do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
With respect to the trail easement, is that the east side of the track mean the, along the roadway easements, more or less?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, that's correct. Yes.
Mr. Strike, you good?
I think, I think this question goes back to the hours of operations. I'm sorry. We're on the, we're on the plating portion right now? Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, although we're combining the two.
We're combining. The hours of operation shows that this is available 24/7. Is the adjoining Birchwood Loop also open 24/7?
Yes, it is.
They both are?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, at this point, I'd like to invite the petitioner forward for the public hearing. I've read the rules previously. The petitioner has 10 minutes. Those testifying have, representatives of groups have five, individuals have three. If we can bring you forward. And what I'm, what we're being asked to do is to weigh in on two actions related to the conditional use permit and one action related to the plat. So at some point, we will ask for three different motions and handle those separately. But you're up.
With me this evening is Kurt Steiner, the MOA project manager for this project, as well as Sergeant Jensen with the Anchorage Police Department. We're requesting approval of a conditional use permit for an outdoor shooting range to be used by the South Central law enforcement agencies. At this time, APD is the primary identified user. The site is located in Birchwood in its own light industrial or I-1, which is the light gray right here, with the subject property being outlined in red. To the kind of northeast is the existing Birchwood Recreation Shooting Range, which is also known as the Isaac Walton. It's zoned PLI or Public Lands and Institution. To the, to the south is the Birchwood Airport, which is also light industrial and then other industrial zone, light industrial zone land, the Alaska Railroad, and then 170-acre parcel owned by Ekutna that is I-2 and will be taking access off of Birchwood Loop Road. The nearest residence is about 3,300 feet from the project site. The site was selected and approved through a 2008 site selection study. Due to funding constraints, we're proposing that the project be completed in two phases. Phase one will include four shooting ranges. There's a 300-foot range, I'm sorry, yard, a 150-yard range and two 50-yard ranges. There'll be a 26-foot tall berm separating the Isaac Walton or the Birchwood Shooting Range to the new range. And there'll be an eight-foot security fence that will be mid-slope, that will prevent any kind of casual access between this site on to APD's or the South Central Shooting Range. There'll also be the range operation building, which will have a 28-person classroom. It will hold ammunition, as well as have a range manager office, and then also include support storage. Phase two will include the tactical village and an academic building. The academic building will be part of the range operation building. The tactical village is not anticipated to have live-fire at this time. It's going to be simulations comparable to paintball fighting. When we talk about the ranges that aren't constructed in phase one, there's going to only be the four. There's a chance that all four of those ranges can't be constructed as part of phase one. If that's the case, then that would be the only live-fire that would be approved in phase two. But as it's designed now, we would have no problem with, if the commission feels more comfortable separating out phase two or putting a condition that states that if there is going to be live-fire, that we have to come back. I think the intent of staff was that it did have to meet the general plan of what we're stating in our, our application. There'll be a 100-foot vegetated buffer along Birchwood Spur Road, as well as a 20-foot buffer along the bluff. So noise study was completed in 2015, which you guys have discussed. It did find that the range would have no discernible noise added into the area. We did receive the public comment asking about a berm being provided along Birchwood Spur Road. We don't believe that this is necessary because the actual ranges themselves will have individual berms. There'll be 16-foot tall berms along the length of each range, as well as a 26-foot berm at each backstop that will have bullet traps. Those bullet traps will collect spent ammunition. They will be periodically mined and the ammunition or the lead will be removed from the site and taken off-site. The MOA is working with Shannon Wilson to prepare a lead mitigation plan for both the current contamination that's on site from illegal shooting that's been happening, as well as preparing one to prevent future contamination. We did meet with the Birchwood Community Council in May to discuss the project. Most of the questions that we heard were in regards to the noise, which we were able to address. As staff mentioned, the reply is pretty straightforward. We're removing the property line between the two parcels that will give more flexibility with design throughout the life of the project. And with that, we've heard the conditions of approval that have been put on the table. We've talked about that with staff, as well as the conditions of approval that are provided in the staff report, and we agree with all the findings and what's been recommended. So with that, we'll like to save the rest of my time for rebuttal and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. You have about four and a half minutes. When you say you're, you're okay with staff conditions, does that include the two conditions that they talked about here this evening?
Yes.
Including the easement, the easement as well?
Yes.
Okay. Is that your question, John? Okay. Anybody else have questions for the petitioner? Andre?
Yes, there, I read in here about that the, this firing range should be superior for noise kind of reduction to the existing Birchwood range where APD currently range. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
A lot of that has to do with just, it's being constructed with more modern technology as well as, we now know better best practices for developing that, for developing shooting ranges. And a lot of it has to do with the berms that are going to be constructed at the backstops, as well as the length of each, each of the ranges. There'll be canopies over the shooting ranges that will kind of help -- There'll be canopies over the shooting ranges that will kind of help absorb some of the noise as well. So just best practices.
One, one more follow-up?
Yeah.
So does the existing range not have the berms or smaller berms, or do you know?
They do, well, there's already, there is an existing berm, um, so where we're putting the 26-foot-tall berm along the 300-foot range, or the 300-yard range, um, that's existing, we'll be augmenting it to get to the 26 feet. Um, but it's my understanding that there are not berms, uh, at each of the ranges as there will be for this.
Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you. You know, I applaud the, I've looked at the berms, I've built a number of ranges in the past and saw what you were doing, and see that it does minimize, uh, some of that noise activity. So I applaud you with that. But I do note that the, and I did a quick look on here, the range next door, I'm showing hours of operation are 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., yet we were hearing earlier possibly 24 hours. So this 24-hour range has me just a little bit concerned. Um, and in reading through the packet, it would appear that it was to handle the one-off type situation of officers with, um, night duties that, um, would go in on their own without a range control, range master, and so forth possibly with them, but you would have singular tool, dual participants in there any time of the night or day. Is that the intent?
That is the intent. It will be on rare instances. Um, it does provide more flexibility, uh, but it's not to be the norm. Uh, and it's, they're going to, first of all, uh, for security reasons, no shooter will ever go in by themselves. They always have to go in as pairs at a minimum. Um, and I, to my understanding, and Sergeant Jensen can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's, it's just not open to go in wherever. You'd have to arrange with the, the range master prior to going in to shoot. Um, and that the idea would, that this would also occur more in the winter months when the neighboring houses would have their windows shut. So it's trying to eliminate going in in the daytime, or I'm sorry, in the summertime.
Are limited hours of operations a significant area of distress for the operation?
Um, they are. Um, do you have anything to add to that? Sorry, I mean, I have, Sergeant Jensen can speak more to that.
Yeah, I can speak to that somewhat, Sergeant Mike Jensen with APD. Um, I, I'll tell you that, uh, most of the time, our shooting, and I spent four and a half years running the academy, I was six years on a SWAT team, so I've done a bit of training with the department, 20 years as a department altogether, but most of our training at this range would be, 95% of the time would be during the hours when Birchwood's shooting, realistically. Now, our night, or our SWAT team does train with night vision goggles, so that would give us the ability to, during limited times, go in there with night vision and use those, you know, practice with that technology, but most of the time, it's going to fall between the hours when Birchwood's open already. So our mid-shift officers start at 11:00 p.m., and they get off at 7:00 a.m. So for us to get them qualified on a rifle or a shotgun on that range, on a long-distance range, we have to start them right at 7:00, because two hours isn't a lot of time to get them through, uh, 50-round qual, you know, 10-offs or something like that. So we got to start right at 7:00 to get that done. So it's a very limited amount of time that we'd be doing outside of those normal hours, but it'd be nice to have that flexibility for, like you say, the one-off type training when we want to do some with night vision or some special team training with the troopers or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to the petitioner? Okay, like I said, I, I'm sure you have four and a half minutes for rebuttal, okay? Anyone wishing to testify? Anybody at all? Nope, going once, going twice. You're up again.
Thank you for your questions, and we look forward to hearing your recommendation.
Great, thank you. Tony?
Thank you. With regard to case 2016-0063, this pullout of Anchorage Request for Conditional Use Permit, I move to approve, uh, based on, uh, department recommendations, uh, labeled A and B, uh, A-1 through 3, and B in our staff packet as outlined on page 7 and 8. Do you hear me?
Yeah, Tony, could I ask that you, um, revise that to just deal with A initially, and B as a separate motion?
Sounds good.
Oh, and, and before, just a little housekeeping, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you, sorry about that.
Um, let me restate my motion then.
Thank you.
Case 2016-0063, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to conditions A-1 through 3 as outlined, and our staff packet on page 7.
And that's seconded by Mr. Sporhe. So, Mr. Strike, are you still in the queue? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm going to support that motion, and this motion, and I think it's, um, they've done a good job. I've seen a number of ranges built across the country and here, and this is, this is long overdue. Uh, my initial reluctance had been with the live-fire possibility with the Tactical Village, but the, you've alleviated those concerns. That is not live-fire, and therefore I can wholeheartedly get behind this. Thank you.
Go ahead, Francis.
Uh, point of information, um, staff recommended, uh, new condition number four to state, if required by the plat, revise the site plan and landscape plan to show the trail. Um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, all our i's were dotted and t's were crossed. Thank you.
Right, through the chair, I, I would include that recommendation in my motion, unless I need to make an amendment, or John down there can make an amendment, uh, to my main motion.
Can I, before you go there, can I ask, the, the additional watershed management, that was on the plat, Dave? Is that, is that what that one is? So this one would, would go on to the-
Through the chair, uh, to the commission, yes, that's correct. That will be a, a condition placed on the plat.
If I could just say, Mr. Chair, the, the thinking is, is you have a conditional use, you have a plat, and the conditional use approval, if a trail were to, um, uh, be proposed, then potentially some of the landscaping here would, um, have to be relocated or moved. A trail could affect, um, the site plan, and so hence the, um, the department recommendation for conditional approval acknowledging that with, with the conditional use, and then the plat being a separate measure, um, you know, needing an easement, and then the, that separate plat note about watershed management services concerned, just to make sure that we map out all of the, the changes that sort of were sprung on us tonight.
That's fine. So we have, we have, uh, I'd be okay with this condition number four provided, as, as Mr. Cange is, provided Mr. Sporhe says as well. Are you, Mr. Sporhe, has a second? Okay. You have that. Okay. So, Mitzi?
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. The, um, the petitioner has done a good job of their homework and worked with the community council, the notes from the open house, the public meeting that they held, indicate no significant objection to the use from the, um, adjacent neighborhood. Um, it's an extension of essentially an existing use, um, for the benefit of the community through the training of the police department.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Anybody else wishing to speak to the motion? That motion passes. Additionally, yeah, on, on section B. Go ahead, Mr. Cange.
With regard to 2016-0063, I move to approve, uh, Phase Two, subject to the compliance with the information provided, approval of case 2016-0063, titled 21, specifically Chapter 6 and Chapter 7 Development and Design Standards.
Thank you for that motion, seconded by Mr. Sporhe. Mr. Spring?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll be supporting that motion. I'm wondering if, um, need to amend it to include, um, prohibitions against, um, expansion of any additional, um, shooting ranges in Phase Two. I believe the, the petitioner said that, I think, a little bit confused, I think there's some potential that that might happen, but the approval should be subject to the, to the understanding that no additional, uh, shooting ranges would be, um, included in Phase Two.
So do you want to, do you want to add that as a condition?
Yeah, I'd like to add that as a-
Let's, as, okay, what's your motion? Can you try to restate it, John?
Okay.
And maybe the language being as, you know, stated right now, that it's, it's proposed for simulation, and then something beyond simulation?
Yes, it's, um, site plan would be, uh, is approved su- subject to the understanding that it does not, Phase Two does not include any additional, um, shooting ranges.
Can I s- Oh. Yeah, I think Greg and I were talking about it earlier. Can I, we suggest that, that we, um, just say if they're going to propose live-fire outside of the operational hours of the other shooting range? Because it seems like you're going to get, you're going to get firearm noise down there anyways. Um, why would we want to restrict them from using live-fire during the same hours that the other shooting range uses live-fire?
Actually, I believe the motion, to clarify, John, your motion, the conflict was that during Phase Two, one of the original four ranges that were planned might get built during Phase Two due to lack of funding during Phase One, and therefore, Phase Two would be still, the four ranges, the 300-foot, the 300-yard, the 150-yard, and the 50-yard ranges, of which there are two. That's all the ranges that are planned. They, one or two may get built during Phase Two due to lack of funding for Phase One.
Let's, if I may, because, because I, with all due respect, Ms. Ritter confused me when she said it. Don't, don't confuse the phasing with construction phasing. So think of this phase that you're approving, whether they build it all at once or in two steps, is still Phase One. So, and I think that's where you, I mean, I think that's where we're, I think the issue that John was talking about is if in Phase Two, the use went beyond simulation, to, to your point, then they ought to come back. And I think that's what we, that they were amenable to do so. So we just need to say it intelligently.
Well, thank you for clarifying it, Commissioner Strike. I, I wasn't clear exactly what, I'm okay with the, um, uh, with the four ranges, whether it's in, they call it Phase One or Phase Two. It's in the site plan, so we're approv, we already proved that part of the site plan, so I don't, uh, I'm going to withdraw my motion, I think.
I, I'd still entertain one if someone had one, to, to put that limitation. They're amenable to it on Phase Two, if, if, but, but someone's got to state one.
All right, I'll, I'll state it again then. Um, Phase Two is approved, um, with the understanding that the Tactical Village and simulation would, does not include live-fire.
Good with that? Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Strike. Any further discussion? Any opposed? The main motion is amended. So we're back to the main motion. Anyone else wishing to speak to the main motion? Greg, are you still in there? No. Everybody good? Okay, please, please vote on the main motion as amended. That motion passes. Um, next up, could we have a motion on case S-12285? Thanks, Tony. Go ahead.
Thank you. With regard to case S-12285, subdivision of one tract of land into two, one tract of land, uh, I move to approve, subject to department recommendations, as outlined on our staff packet at page four and five. That's A-1, 2, 3, and 4.
Thank you. That's the main, the main motion, seconded by Mr. Sporhe. Now, I believe there are a couple of suggested amendments. Mr. Spring, go ahead.
Yes, there's two amendments. Amendment number one would, uh, add, portions of the subdivision are situated within the flood plain district as it exists on the date thereof. The boundaries of the flood hazard district may be altered from time to time in accordance with the provisions of Section 2107-020E. All construction activities and any land use within the flood hazard district shall conform to the requirements of, um, AMC Chapter 2107-20E or any future revision. And that was in the memorandum dated July 11th, 2016. And amendment number two-
So these would be, you have a motion to amend the main motion to add what you're calling two, but really that was amendment, that would be condition five and now condition six, as I understand it?
Condition five, thank you for clarification. And condition number six, additional, um, condition resolved with non-motorized, uh, trail coordinator need to dedicate 20-foot right-of-way easement along the east part of the track.
So, uh, could you hit your motion to amend button, John?
Sorry.
And could I get a second? Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none. Uh, the main motion is amended to add conditions five and six. We're back to the main motion. Anyone else wishing to speak? Is that, John, are you in the queue, or? Okay, please vote. That motion passes. Thank you. Now, it's a time of night, we depend on Mr. Walker to be quick, and he is. Thank you, Mr. Walker, for motion to adjourn. This meeting's adjourned.